Further discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we need to, you know, identify? Oh, it says from contingency. Perfect. Very good. And item B is piece de resistance, I guess. But it's an updated discussion on the East Street building, Pettibone building, Gammie 25, and Probate Court. That falls to me. So, let me start with, I've got a schematic here. Start to distract everybody. This is, I hope everybody can see this. Kind of a breakdown of the Pettibone building from front to back. You've got your main entrance, right over here between this blue and this fluorescent yellow. You've got the main corridor that comes down here. You've got the back wing, which is the most recent addition. And then these other wings. You can kind of see the layout in this square-like shape with this other wing off to the side here. So, what we've done is, obviously, everybody knows my proposal to make Pettibone School into a community space and move at least three, hopefully four departments into there. So, we've got it color-coded by where these agencies have and they're involved in the process. They walked the school. They've worked out where, you know, which space would work out best for them. So, we'll start with the community space because that really is the focus of this. This large area here is where the library was. So, New Millford is in need of a place where, you know, larger groups could come, communicate, meet in a comfortable space that is specifically for the community. Not in the schools, not somewhere, you know, in some other building, but for the community. So, that is a large kind of meeting space that would be for community purposes. We also have, the cafeteria is another great space. It's an open space where the community could come, could meet, and it is attached to the kitchen, which offers additional possibilities. We're also going to probably identify one or two classrooms where, you know, smaller groups could come and meet that don't need the kind of bigger spaces as well. Although, there's a kind of separate space in the library where that would serve a purpose too. Parks and Recreation, you see the blue area. So, where the offices originally were in the school, Parks and Rec is looking to occupy that space. It's going to be a space where people could come in, kind of interact with them. It'll allow them to fulfill their administrative functions. But then, most importantly, one of the things that Parks and Rec, when they came to me and said, you know, "We're spread out all over town." What we need is a place where we could conduct our programming. You know, right now, they're looking for space in all the different schools. They have a tremendous amount of programs. And what you see here are classrooms that they've identified so that they can have these programs in one space concurrently, at the same time. They don't have to, you know, go to the Board of Ed and try to find space in one of these schools around town. So, that's a tremendous boost for them as well. And then you see the other large area for Parks and Rec is the gymnasium. That's something that Youth Agency would probably share as well. But the gymnasium is a tremendous resource for Parks and Rec to not only have, you know, the basketball programs and the leagues, but, you know, it's a great space for them to conduct. You know, they've got their summer camp, and they've got, you know, all the kinds of things that go on in the gym, not just basketball. So, it's a great opportunity for them to do all this stuff in one place. And they're very excited about that. The Social Services is kind of designated as these red color-coded. So, it's, they identified this wing up here, kind of to the top of the schematic. And one of the important considerations for them, number one, was, you know, if you go to their space now, they're dealing with some confidential matters. And, you know, they needed additional space rooms to conduct these confidential classes and conversations. So, that's what this space provides them. But also, and maybe more importantly, it provides separate access to these doors over here to administer the food bank. That's important for two very important reasons. Number one, they collect a tremendous amount of food. I mean, it's really amazing if you go there one day and see how much they collect. It's really incredible. And right now, if you go there, when they're distributing food, they've got food on desks, on file cabinets, bread. It's piled here and there. This will allow them to deliver food, to offload food, you know, on a main floor, right to wherever they need to get it. And they'll have space to store it, to sort it. And, most importantly, when they administer the food, it's a separate space for, you know, clients of the food bank to come in and take advantage of the food that's being offered there. It's on one floor again, right now, at the Senior Center. It's on the second floor. It's, logistically, you know, it's very difficult. And it's also a space that they share with the Senior Center as well. So, you've got people coming in for the, for Social Services and the food bank. You've got people that are there for the Senior Center. This allows, you know, a designated area. It's fairly private, separate from the rest of the building. And to me, it really allows them to fulfill this, this really important mission. And then, this kind of pinkish area is the Youth Agency. So, Youth Agency is this corridor over here. It's a big improvement over, you know, their spaces that they have right now at the Senior Center. The reason, they are another agency that I'm always amazed at how much they offer. They've got a tremendous amount of programs. Some of it is confidential. A lot of it is just simply space that they could, you know, kind of grow into. And they've got so many students and volunteers and seasonal employees that this is a tremendous space that will allow them to really, to really kind of grow into their mission. So, this is the space that's been identified for them. And you see in the purple over here, you know, Board of Education. We talked a lot about, I'll get to East Street in a second. So, this back wing over here is impressive for a number of reasons. First of all, it's the most recent addition. It wasn't part of the original school. So, it's, it's got a little bit more updated, kind of, you know, electric. It's got more updated. The building itself, this part of the building, is a bit more modern. And it'd be a bit more, I think, you know, easier to, kind of, you know, modify the space for the Board of Ed. Again, it's got separate entrances and access to the parking lot over here. So, that, it really does occupy kind of a separate sphere within the building. It's not really something that they have right now. And it's something that, you know, we want to kind of show the Board of Ed is, you know, we take pride in our Board of Education. I envision this a place where not only the administrative offices kind of be set up, but it'd be a dedicated town council room with a media center. You know, and it's got space for adult education and have adults, you know, space for that, for Mr. Schaffler was alluding to. Alternative education. And, and the really interesting thing about it is that, you know, it's got these small kind of corridors that are connected that could be sectioned off from the rest of the building. So, in terms of security, it's a really easy fix to secure this wing and make it specifically for the Board of Ed and to limit access from the rest of the building. So, that's it in a nutshell. You see some of these classrooms that have not been filled in. We do have space for, you know, we are talking to nonprofits and we've opened it up to, you know, some of these local organizations that need space, you know, at a very reduced and reasonable type of rent. So, for instance, we've got this music room over here. We've got these classrooms. Obviously, we've got the kitchen and some of the rooms across from there that are opportunities that frankly, the community has never really had before. So, this is, you know, the broad stroke of how we're kind of looking to organize this. Now, where I am in this process is, you know, we're working with each department head to identify, you know, what is your budget? You know, what are the logistics of getting this done? Tell me what you need to kind of make these rooms usable for you. And the results, you know, we haven't gotten anything positive, you know, concrete yet, but they've been very positive. The feedback is very positive in terms of the amount of work that, you know, maybe needed to kind of make this a reality. But we are putting together a budget. I mean, it's got been cleaned. It's been closed up for, you know, a year and a half right now. But, some work has been done. It was, it was set forth in this year's budget. So, to give you an update on that, you know, we had repairs to the heating system in the boiler room. The boiler was leaking. So, we talked about their budget season. And that's already been fixed. So, instead of continuing, you know, keeping it filled up with water, we fixed that leak and the boiler is ready to go and functional for the winter. They've also completed repairs on some of the roof. If you go through there, you'll see some of the drop-down ceiling is, you know, kind of fall down. There were, there were some leaks in the ceiling. They didn't happen recently. I mean, the leaks have been there for years. It's just that, you know, the, the old, I guess, owners would just replace the tiles, you know. It's kind of like what I do in my basement. Instead of, so we actually fixed the leak. So, I'll address that. And then, you know, we've got to get it cleaned up and we'll figure out, you know, what we need to do to, to kind of get it, you know, looking nice now. But, you know, those are some of the main concerns that we had identified over the past six months. The boiler issue and the leaking roof. But beyond that, like I said, we're putting together a budget to see what it's going to take to get our departments in there. What kind of upgrades? There are some electrical upgrades that need to be done there. There are, you know, fuse boxes in a couple of these places. So, we're, back here, this is kind of, you know, this back wing is all up with, you know, a nice, the electrical looks good. And some of these front areas is like the old glass bulbs that you would screw in. So, that would be up to where we're getting quotes on that. Yes, Mr. Chamberlain?
Mr. Mayor, is it anticipated that the existing parking will meet projected needs? Or is there going to be a parking component to this project?
Yeah, we're looking at that also. And I got to get a sense for how, you know, in terms of employees, I mean, if you include Board of Ed's got 25 employees, Parks and Rec four, Social Services four, and Youth Agency 12, you've got about a total of 45 people. Now, that's less than, you know, all the teachers and administrators that were working there at the time. So, you know, we're going to address that. But, I'm not, it's not the kind of thing that keeps me up at night in terms of parking, but, you know, we're certainly working and figuring out what we need to provide. So, this is in broad strokes. I mean, as I get numbers and as I get, you know, estimates for costs, I'll come back and I'll explain that. But I can tell you, you know, on another note, that, I said this, I don't know if people believe me, but I didn't expect, you know, Parks and Rec to go here. I didn't, I didn't understand that, you know, how they felt in terms of their needs. I didn't think social, I wasn't thinking about Social Services when we were thinking about this until I got into office and I heard the, the real angst between senior, I mean, not that they can't work together, but because the Senior Center does so much for the senior population, the Social Services does so much, occupying that space inevitably leads to conflict. So, the Senior Center is very happy that they're going to be getting, they're going to be getting the second floor space so that they can expand their services for the seniors. And Social Services is very excited to actually have a space where they can conduct their confidential conversations. But also, you know, administer this food bank, which I was surprised at how much food is donated by supermarkets, farmers, I mean, and the volunteer, it's incredible. So, so these agencies have come to me and, and I've been really, really impressed with their vision for what they can make with this building. Youth Agency, same thing. I mean, you know, Mark Mencken, you know, he's got such a great imagination. He sees, he doesn't see an obstacle, he sees an opportunity. So, he's already planning the programs and how this is going to work and allow them to, to kind of work. And we're already looking at the gym, the latchkey program, how it could work here. Parks and Rec and our summer programs. You know, having adult ed programs during the day through the Board of Ed. You know, potentially, I mean, if you had space, I, I thought the building was too big. I've run out of space. I would love to have some kind of STEM program in there. And I'd love to see if we could still do that. The nonprofits, the community organizations that are so excited to be able to have space within the town. It's really been impressive and endearing. So, but that's it in broad strokes. I understand, you know, as I get more into it, I'm going to have more details. But, you know, I'm trying to make as much progress as I can. Yes, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things, broad strokes of the services. When we're looking at Social Services moving to John Peppa, I know there's a lot of conversation when Loews and Fishes now is going to be having their hospitality house over by Danny Strong's old place.
Sure.
And the consensus was from most people with that particular clients who needed to be near the, where they could get their services.
Right.
So, is there going to be a plan or an opportunity, since they'll be at the hospitality house on Bridge Street? How are they going to get to Peg?
Let me address that. You know, there's an important distinction that you made there, you know. Loews and Fishes said that they needed to be in downtown so that they could service their clients. That came from them. Social Services is telling me what they need. And I'm deferring to Social, the leader of that agency, the department head, is telling me that this is going to be a better fit for her clients. That I don't know if they're the same clients as Loews and Fishes, but I know that Peg Bellino would not suggest moving that program somewhere that was going to make it harder for her clients to kind of participate. If anything, this is on the bus line. It's centrally located in downtown. We put so much emphasis on downtown. It's a heart of our community. But we got to realize, you know, New Millford is a big place and there's a lot of people that live on the other side of that bridge that participate in this program for whom maybe getting to downtown is actually harder. So, you know, there might be drawbacks, but I defer to Peg. And when she says that this is a better thing for the program, I've got to, you know, I kind of got to defer to her. But if there's an issue with people getting there, I'm sure we'll hear about it. I mean, people will be vocal. But, you know, the food bank is a little bit different from Loews and Fishes. I mean, it, it's a bridge for a lot of people that have homes, have cars, and have jobs. I know Loews and Fishes is as well. But, you know, I get the sense that there's the opportunity to kind of get to this location. Like I said, it is on the bus line. So, hopefully that addresses it.
Mayor, have you gotten any costs on any of the upgrades that we are going to need for this?
No, that's what I'm trying to get. You know, the main cost that we've identified now, I mean, one of them is cleaning it. So, I mean, we got to, I got to hire someone. I want to get quotes to get the place cleaned out. It's been closed up. It smells musty. And then, the other cost is electrical. So, you know, our, we got a low bid electrician that we've already kind of, you know, awarded through Public Works. And just coordinating with this individual to get a quote for the type of work that needs to be done here is a little bit difficult. But we're scheduled for Wednesday. So, hopefully, he'll be able to kind of give us a sense of some of the upgrades that need to be done, outlets that need to be installed. And that's working with the departments to make sure, you know, they've got the infrastructure to kind of run the equipment that they need. But, but no, once I have it, I mean, I'm, believe me, I'm as anxious as anybody else to have it as well.
And has Kendrick gone in to see what, as far as IT we need?
Yeah, absolutely. Kendrick's been in there. Yeah, he's worked it. He's got, you know, he's got, you know, where the infrastructure is going to go. There's a little computer room here. So, it's not like the building is completely devoid of wiring or anything like that. But yeah, Kendrick is, he's definitely working on that issue too.
And do you know that we have the trunk lines that go in to the property?
They've identified where those will go, you know. So, they'll work with, I think it's Frontier, to, to get the lines, to get the, the wiring in there. And they'll identify the trunk lines where they'll already go underground and connect it out to whatever it is. So, yeah, Kendrick's working on that as well. And they're working with the, you know, hopefully, we're keeping the Board of Ed in mind with this as well. So, you know, the fiber that we put in, we want to make sure that the Board of Ed can use if they choose to go there. And, you know, make sure that it's, it's kind of moving ready too.
And do you, first, you were talking about the nonprofits coming in and doing their leases. Is it going to be like a triple net type lease? Or it's like, here's the, here's the lease agreement and it covers utilities, heat, all that?
We're kind of working that out. I, I haven't gotten to the weeds on that yet. I mean, you know, I want to, I want to just find, you know, a place where, a price point where, you know, we're not making money off of this thing, but a little bit of revenue that comes in from renting some of these classrooms will help with the upkeep of the building. It's going to hopefully help these nonprofits and community organizations have a place where they can kind of conduct their affairs. But in terms of whether it's triple net or whatever it is, I don't, we don't have lease agreements drafted up. We haven't even gotten to that. We've just got, you know, enough interests so that I know it's worth looking forward on. And then we can kind of figure out, you know, for everybody, how we're going to do it. We're not looking to bang anybody out. We're not, like I said, we're not looking to make money. We'll just cover some of the costs of maintaining the building.
And are you looking to get a general contract? Or will it be Public Works that will be the general contractor?
I guess that, that's where we're kind of defining the amount, the scope of the work that needs to be done. I mean, if it's, if it's a huge, kind of outrageous project, then we'll look at it from that point of view. But if there's, you know, we've got, you know, we've got electrician who says, "Yeah, I could do this, X, Y, and Z. It's going to cost us much money." I mean, that's what our Public Works, you know, facilities guys do. They hire, if they can't do a job, they hire somebody out and just oversee it. So, it really depends upon the scope of the work that needs to be done. But if it's some electrical work, there's going to be some painting that needs to be done. There's some pink hallways in there that Youth, that Youth Agency doesn't want to work in. So, we'll figure out, you know, how to get the stuff painted, cleaned. We'll look at some of the carpeting. But beyond that, you know, unless somebody tells me something different, it doesn't, from what I've seen so far, we haven't gotten into something that requires a general contract.
And are you thinking of the General Committee going to help with that? Like, or is that just Public Works and they come into council?
Well, I envision that. I envision it as, you know, I'm kind of pushing this and working with my department heads. I mean, the committee is the people that are, that are going to be occupying this space. So, we're working with our department heads, with Public Works, with IT to kind of make this a reality. Is there, you know, a committee? You know, committees to me are something where, you know, I can't do it myself. That's why I appointed the subcommittee for job descriptions. I don't have the time to, to go through the job description for Greg. So, it's a great example of a, of a subcommittee. And I've got other ones that I'll probably do a point. But this is something that I'm intimately, you know, involved with. And, you know, right now, it seems to be working. If it gets, you know, too big for me to handle, I'll be the first person to say, "Let's appoint a committee to help me kind of identify and move this project along." But as far as right now, as we're defining the scope and figuring out a budget and what the work is, it's pretty manageable.
Do you have an idea when we're going to get numbers?
Like I said, the electrician's coming on Wednesday. We're talking to a cleaner. We're kind of, you know, continuing to work with IT and our Public Works department to see what needs to be done. So, I hate giving, you know, time estimates. I told everybody this would be done by fall and September. So, I'm not exactly the best person on that. But it's a front burner issue for me. I mean, I'll continue to give updates, you know. You know, every, when, when there's something to update, frankly, when I have a budget, I'll be the first one to present it here because I'm going to need to identify where the money's going to come from. And, you know, it kind of segues into the second thing that we're looking at too. I mean, so, East Street, what I'm also doing is, you know, identifying East Street. And a lot of people have said, you know, "Well, East Street, Pettibone." So, I'm identifying the budget for East Street as well because there is a cost there in maintaining that facility. You've got a cost in, you know, the overhead. And then you've got a cost in the work that's going to be required to get that building up to code, you know, to meet ADA and OSHA standards. And that's what I want us to compare. When we have a cost for Pettibone, I want to look at those costs for East Street. And, you know, you could make, I don't think finances are the only component of this, but they are a component, and look at that. And you tell me if I'm off by saying, you know, the cost for Pettibone far outweighs the cost of what it was going to take to get East Street to a place that frankly, it's not out right now. And, you know, we risk, every day that we occupy East Street in its current state is a day that, you know, we have to sort down these kind of hanging over our head. If not compliance. I mean, I was talking to somebody the other day. ADA, you know, a municipality got faced with $10,000 a day fines for not being compliant with the ADA. So, when you look at that, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer that we got a beautiful building in East Street, but that is not suited to our administrative and town needs, but can't be rehabilitated with a developer and, and hopefully, you know, maintain that building facade. But moving those town offices and agencies into this more modern building, you know, that has a better layout, that has handicap-accessible bathrooms, that's all on one floor. And then frankly, when you look at this map, I love the idea of having, you know, the Board of Education being in such close proximity with the Youth Agency because they do complement each other. And then being so close to Parks and Rec because, you know, they do overlap. And, you know, having the gymnasium there and these classrooms that could be occupied for learning. To me, it's a great, it's a great opportunity for synergy between our different departments. But that does get me to East Street. So, I will be looking at that and I'll be providing cost of, you know, an elevator and, you know, ramps and bathrooms. And, you know, the other issues, foundations, whatever it is, so that we really could look at this. It's not to say that East Street isn't worth saving or preserving. It's just that we have an opportunity to put it to a better use. You know, I'd love to sell the building. You know, I'd love to have proposals here where we could agree that, you know, like what Gary Gold brings in with the bank building. He didn't tear down that building. He kept it. He restored it. He turned it into, you know, a jewel downtown. I see the same kind of opportunity with East Street and that entire property. So, that's, that's the broad stroke on, on East Street. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Bass?
On the East Street, the move, the Board of Ed relinquishes the building. They move to Pettibone. The cost of the move, is that going to be the Board of Ed?
No, no, we'll work on that. And that should be the town. And I'm going to, that's what I'm going to put together in the budget also. The cost to move everybody into this facility. I'm not looking to saddle the Board of Ed with an additional burden. I think this is going to help them. But ultimately, it is, it's not something that I'm saying, "Well, you need to find the money for it." Frankly, it all comes out of the same pot, you know. I mean, whether it comes from the town, whether it comes from the Board of Ed. You know, we passed a budget a couple of months ago and we approved their budget. So, you know, rather than go through that rigmarole, let's just say it's going to be funded by the town as one big pot. And, you know, we're all going to be better, we're all going to benefit from it.
And then, Mayor, when, if the move takes place, they're there with this being a town building. Does the town itself then have the custodians? Or is it quasi-town?
We got to get, yeah, we got to get into the weeds on that. And they've got their own, I don't care if they've got their own, you know, they've got somebody that maintains the East Street building now and if they want to maintain that. But we got to really figure that out. Right now, we're kind of just figuring out the logistics of where everybody would go and what needs to be done to get there. And then, yeah, we'll figure out, you know, is it all our guys? Is it, you know, part there guys? Do we merge some of that together? We'll be in discussions with that. Hopefully, we'll, we'll reach some kind of compromise that works out for everybody. So, we've got these two buildings. And then we've got, you see an attachment here, you've got Probate Court. So, I know Judge, Judge Marty isn't here tonight, you know, understandably. But if he was, you know, you see, these are plans in 14B that have been drafted, I believe this was, was prepared now by the State Probate Court system. So, this is what they're looking to see, that ground floor of 25 Church Street, become. And just by looking at this, you see, you know, I want you to kind of realize the difference between what they have now. So, when you walk in as a receptionist waiting here, you see those kind of, you know, that barrier there. You see those kind of, you know, that barrier there? That's a security barrier where, you know, they could, you know, let people in, take people's names. But it provides a measure of safety for the judge and for everybody else that's back there. These are tremendously sensitive, emotional, um, sometimes, um, you know, mentally compromised, you know, people involved in proceedings. And when you walk through Town Hall now, I mean, if you walk through there, if you don't walk in enough, you'll see there is nothing. These people are, are kind of clumped together in this powder keg. The attorneys and the opposing parties are kind of just waiting out there. The public is walking through these kind of situations. Uh, there's no privacy for the people that have to be there. And probate court is just not for people that die in probating a will. There are parental termination proceedings. There is, um, there's all kinds of sensitive issues, uh, conservatorships that are handled by the court. So this, this provides a level of decency and kind of safety, not only for the, um, the litigants, the participants, but also the court itself. And then as they walk through, you see you've got area for their court staff. Right now in that probate court, they're, they're kind of jammed up. Somebody's in a safe, I think, back there.
Right.
So, you know, you got the opportunity, you got a conference room, you've got the staff, you got a bathroom that's ADA compliance. You know, you got a little bit of a, you know, the chief clerk and the judge have their own chambers. And then the hearing room is in the back. One of the things I would love to see is that, you know, I'm kind of curious and I tour around, um, you know, Town Hall. If you've ever been in the attic, you know, they've got these great, you can see where it all used to overlook this building actually, right here. So this was all open and these great buttresses up there. And then on that side was kind of the platform that would overlook this down here. And they've got the old benches that used to be in the courtroom here. These are great old benches with these iron rod, uh, hinges. And, you know, I gotta talk to the judge about this, but I'd love to see those. They're just sitting up there gathering dust. It'd be great to recycle them into, um, you know, the courthouse and into the probate court again. Um, but it's a, it's a vast improvement on space. It's a vast improvement on safety. And frankly, it's something that after meeting with the state probate court, they've been looking at for a long time. And, um, like I said, Judge Marty and, and his staff are very excited about moving across the street, having access still to Town Hall and being in the general area and access to parking is something that's really important to them as well. So I think this is going to be a, a tremendous benefit for town. And it occupies a, a building, you know, consistently on, on an important part of, uh, downtown to Milford. Which brings us to Gallery 25. I see Diane is here, you know, and I did address the Art Commission. This has been kind of a work in progress. It's been something that, um, has continued to evolve. So without saying too much, I know Diane wants to kind of inform her members, you know, what's going on. But, you know, it, it kind of brought to the forefront the challenges that Gallery 25 is facing now also. We love the gallery. We love having a space for local art, artists to display and to have it supported by the town and the community. But, you know, a lot of people don't realize the administrative and the practical burdens that are places on people like Diane, who's put a lot of this on her shoulders, of, you know, maintaining a basically, you know, volunteer business that's open every weekend, that's, uh, you know, needs people, they don't have employees, they rely on volunteers and sometimes people don't show up. And to have to do that every weekend and every week is, um, it's not sustainable. Unfortunately, it falls on Diane's shoulders a lot. So, you know, as we were addressing, you know, where do we put Gallery 25 now? Originally I was saying, why don't you just go upstairs? Realizing, you know, the backlash that, but the practical problems of doing that. And then the other suggestion was moving to the railroad station, which makes, it's made a lot of sense. It's a, it's a downtown building, like a tremendous foot traffic, got great parking. Um, and, uh, and it would be great to emphasize our commitment to the arts and to, to local artists by putting it there. But then the idea, you know, crops up again of, well, we can't maintain this administratively. I mean, we don't have people to man it. So the latest acceleration from the Arts Commission was, well, maybe it doesn't have to be there, you know, 24/7. We don't have to occupy the space all the time. Maybe we have shows, you know, we have a show that runs for two weeks. And then we come back and, you know, we pull our stuff out and we do another show. And that way we could schedule the time that we want to use the railroad station. But it's also available to other groups and other members of the community, um, to share. And it's easier for them administratively to, to organize and it, it allows greater use of that building while still taking advantage of that prime incredible location. So, you know, that's what we're working towards. And the judge on the probate court, keep looking around, this is the check. But the probate court, you know, so they're not ready to, to kind of make any moves now. We've got the schematic, I'm meeting with the judge. So again, put together a budget so that we know how much it's going to cost to renovate the space, work with the other five, the other towns that, that also comprise our probate district. Um, and then once we come up with a budget and, you know, the amount of work that needs to be done, we could kind of put together a schedule on, uh, you know, work and, and find out what can be done in the town, how do we finance it and so on and so forth, so on. Since we're still in those discussions, we probably got at least until January before we get into any kind of real practical work. So the gallery is going to continue to occupy, uh, the Gallery 25 space at least until January. And I think that addresses a lot of the concerns of, there are a lot of community organizations that were booked in the railroad station that used it for some craft fairs and the holidays. So we get past that kind of busy season for the railroad station. And then we could address, you know, how does the gallery transition there? How much do they use it, you know? And then, um, but we get to do it kind of going forward from scratch. Yes, Mr. Bass?
Um, what happens to the Park and Rec building?
You know, it's a great question. I thought about that as an additional meeting space for downtown. So if we're using the, uh, the railroad, um, building a lot more than it's been used now, uh, Park and Rec building is fantastic. It's got great office space in there as well. It's a great opportunity. So it's great to have, um, you know, nonprofits, I think I have this space. But the Park and Rec building, once Park and Rec is out of there, we'll offer another kind of centrally located downtown place for nonprofits, uh, you know, to kind of rent that office space as well. And, um, you know, have a downtown meeting place.
Community space?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so I think that then would work really well, uh, at that location. And we don't want to get rid of the building because IT is, is on the second floor over there. So that we're, there's no way we, we, we kind of stick with the building, but it's a matter of figuring out a way to make it, um, to make it productive for the community. And I think if we kind of work something out like that, it will be. Yes, Mr. Bass?
Mayor, have you and Mr. Palmer kind of touched on where some of these funding sources may be able to use?
I mean, the short answer is I'm always thinking about it. I don't have any kind of plans right now. It really depends on the budget, you know? I mean, if it's, if it's a million dollars, that's going to require a funding source from somewhere else. If it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, I can get it from somewhere else. But until I really have that budget in place, um, there's not much to talk about. But when I do, then we could chart a roadmap, you know, where I could come to you and I could say, here's where I think it comes from here, from here, here's where, um, you know, to have the least impact on our budget. But, um, I gotta have some more solid numbers before I do that. All right. And that concludes my update. You have any more questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Al favor? Very good. Thank you so much, everybody.